This is a copy-written production of the Recreation Centers of Sun City, Incorporated, and is intended for the sole purpose of informing our Recreation Center members. Any duplication, copying, transmission, broadcast, or use including electronic and social media is strictly prohibited without the prior written consent from the Recreation Centers of Sun City, Incorporated. Thank you for watching.
Thank you everybody for coming out here this afternoon. This is a little bit bigger crowd than we expected. We're digging out extra chairs. That's great. Would you all rise please and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Good afternoon, and I'm Bruce Allman, Chair of the Long Range Planning Committee. We have a release that I have to read since we are videotaping and recording this meeting. By entering this room and/or participating in the meeting, you are hereby granting permission to the Recreation Centers of Sun City, Incorporated, to record and use on video and audiotape your image, likeness, and voice. You are also waiving any claims you may have against the Recreation Centers of Sun City, Inc., for using your image, likeness, and voice in connection with the video and audiotaping of this meeting and broadcast or publication of such meeting for any purpose of the Recreation Centers of Sun City, Inc. I want to thank Marcia Johnson and Jo Lynn Higgins for putting this thing together. It looks like the publicity went out pretty good. Also thanks Alan Kleinhans on audio over here and Mike DeVorek doing the recording. Our Long Range Planning Committee, we've got five members here, and our co-chair, the co-chair is Jerry Walzak. On my left is Lynn Leibert.
Hello.
Jim McConnell, Gary Osier, Peggy Loken, and Dave Van der Nout. This Rec Center is over 50 years old and is long due for a major facelift. Your Board of Directors has asked the Long Range Planning Committee to get resident input as to activities desired at the renovated Rec Center. I realize there are many other pressing issues affecting our community, but please try to stay on topic and keep it to this Rec Center only. At this time, please silence your cellphones if you have not done so already. And I understand Jo Lynn and Mike are going to be bringing microphones to you in the crowd rather than have everybody come up to the podium here. It should make it go a little easier. So if you'd like to stand up and we'll get somebody out there to take your question. If you've got to just raise your hand. Jo Lynn, you ready? Jo Lynn's ready. Got one right up front, Jo Lynn.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Semhauser. And do you need my card number or anything for that?
No, we don't need the number.
Okay, right. I'm here on behalf of several people that are big-time pool users here at Mountain View. And our major concern is that we want to make sure that we have one good resort-type pool here in Sun City, such as the one we have right here at Mountain View. I told you I represent several people on this, and I think you'll probably hear for a lot more. One of the important things I think to understand is this pool is used especially if you'll check in the coming months, all the way till next May, as a very social pool. We do not want another walking pool in Sun City. We have heard some concern or some ideas that they want to build this into a volleyball pool. Again, we do not want that. We want to keep a resort-type pool. Swimming lanes, fine. Nice walking area, fine. Areas where people can gather in a little small social group, move around, discuss the happenings of the day, the troubles of the world, whatever it might be. But not a type of pool that is designed to one specific use. We want to keep it as it is, a big general use. If it has to be redone or maybe reconstructed, that's fine. Let's keep it close to the very size that it is because, believe me, it gets filled up in the wintertime. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Wade Nelson, and I'm also a swimmer. I'm here to advocate for a full-sized lap pool here at this end of Sun City. Sun City, as you drive in, it says "The Home of Active Seniors." My girlfriend, who's a rehab doctor, consistently says that exercise is the one fountain of youth available to us as we age. Fortunately, lap swimming is both aerobic and low-impact. And for a lot of us with bum knees and replaced hips and so on, it is one of the few activities available to us. Give me a second, gotta put the glasses on.
Read the notes.
Lap swimmers currently congregate at the Bell Facility, where they have both the lap lanes and the lazy river, which is great for those folks doing rehab, and also the hot spa. That's, you know, a five or six-mile drive for those of us who lap swim. I used Google Maps and took an image of the Bell Center and their aquatic facilities and overlaid it on the area out here currently dedicated to the pool and found that there's room indeed for all of that, including perhaps the sloped amenities and so on on one end of such a pool. Anyway, Sun City at this time already has eight or nine pools that are, for various reasons, are great for socializing and so on, but are not suitable for lap swimming, either because of length, because of depth, because of the temperatures they're maintained at, and so on. It's just my hope, because I'm a resident of this end of Sun City, that consideration of lap swimming and the lap swimmers and our needs would be made in remodeling the facility. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Suzanne James, and I'm a resident that is a second-generation resident here. I live in the second hole. I've been coming here since the late '60s, using Mountain View facilities in all its, especially the pool. I use the gym, but lately I've been going to Fairway for that gym. There's a lot of things that I like, that I'd like to have repeated. I like the big social pool. That's definitely what we've always liked. My husband and I, we like that. We like the shelf around it. Now, I'm actually, I was, a surfer, a swimmer, a lifeguard, and swim instructor. So I know all about swimming and laps. And one of the laps, like in the Oakmont Pool, you've got that big wall. I think usually the ropes are great for delineating laps for the lap swimmers. I don't know would you agree with that, the ropes for using for the lap swimmers to delineate the lanes? Now, in this pool, they've always delineated lanes at certain times for the lap swimmers. The most important thing that I'm here is I'm president of the Aqua Fitness Club. We have, we have a big membership. We have 950 members. And all of these members love our Aqua Fitness classes. We have many classes, and we'll give you the statistics of those classes. We have members here that have all of the statistics of the number of people that come to the classes right here in Mountain View every year. And I go four days a week to the Aqua Fitness class. So I felt then I had to do something to help the club. That's why I'm here. And many of our members have been in these Aqua Fitness classes for like 20 years. I've been almost, at least 10 years. We've got people here, been here 14, 15 years. We've got one, we've got one member that's 100 years old, Ms. Workman, and she just celebrated her birthday. And the one advantage of the fitness classes, I agree that lap swimming is terrific, but not all of us, as we age, are able to do as much lap swimming anymore. And so a great member, many of our members have what we call little aging problems. Like, my joint hurts. I've had a hip replacement. I've had a knee replacement. My heart's kind of bad. So all of these things, as we are aging, is very suitable for the Aqua Fitness aerobic, their aerobic classes, and that you can do it at your own speed. Now, for those that are more athletic, as we know, there's the Masters Program that's held at the Bell for the lap swimmers, the people that swim in competitions. But for a lot of people, just getting out and also going to these things is enough swimming, is enough motion that'll keep you healthy. I think our 100-year-old member, and we have a lot of members in their 80s and their 90s, and of course in their 70s. So with that, I know there's other members here that will give you statistics, but we'll send you the statistics, like the temperature we like, the depth for Aqua Fitness, and the hours, and the number of people that we like to accommodate in this large pool. One thing is make sure that when you do the locker rooms, that they open out onto the pool. A big mistake was made in Marionette, when the locker rooms open onto a lobby. The lobby, you go across into the gym, and it's all wet, wet people coming back and forth. I think that people didn't engage with the architects to design that pool. Now, I'm also a member of the tennis club, and the tennis club, we engaged with the architects. And we built, and we had many forums on, you know, and the architects came in, we critiqued what they did, and then it resulted in a nice tennis facility with a nice pavilion for socializing and playing tennis. And so I hope that you will let us all be involved as you proceed with the design to also get our feedback. With that, I'll thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Long Range Planning Committee and residents of Sun City, I'm Don Shoreje. I'm speaking today on behalf of the 200-plus members of the Sun City Players Community Theater and their Board of Directors. Our organization has been in existence as long as this building has been standing. We've been serving our own members, but not only our own members, but we serve all of the theater arts interests in this community. Our mission is threefold: to educate, to entertain, and to socialize. We educate through our club activities such as workshops and speakers, often culminating in an opportunity to perform for our group. We entertain the entire arts-oriented community by performing three major productions annually: two straight plays and a musical. We socialize at our workshops and our monthly membership meetings. Unlike some other opera organizations that exist solely for their own gratification, we also exist for the betterment of the Sun City quality of life. We entertain approximately 5,000 people with our shows annually, gathering very favorable comments on our performances. Over time, our technical seating and hospitality capabilities have fallen behind the expectations of our audiences and our members. Another consideration is that we provide considerable revenue to the Recreation Centers coffers. Between space rental and technician fees, we are able to maintain our nonprofit status, but we also have returned over $45,000 in fees to the Rec Centers over the past four years. Many of you here are aware that our upgrades and renovations to this space have been presented to the RCSC Board multiple times in the past, only to have those dreams dashed. We believe that there is reason to be optimistic that something will happen this time. We have heard the mantra that all Rec Center facilities need to be multipurpose, yet it has been reported in the, both to the forerunner of this committee in 2009 and in 2013, that none of the existing facilities owned by the RCSC are totally suitable for the performing arts. Also, we look around the community and we see that each newly renovated facility has a featured, featured activity, specifically or capability. You'll have to excuse me, my eyes have been dilated by my eye doctor. There's pickleball at Marionette, there's an indoor pool in an auditorium at Sundial, and there's an indoor walking track at Fairway. Well, why not a performing arts center as the featured activity at Mountain View? The top three complaints that we hear from our audience is our uncomfortable seating, poor sight lines, and restroom availability. A performing arts facility providing permanent theater seating and a sloped floor would go a long way toward addressing the first two of these issues. This is not only for our audience and members, but for those who are attending lectures, movies, large meetings, and on. So we have individuals in our organization with experience in theater design who have put together a detailed list of considerations and who would be happy to assist in making such a facility useful to the users. Sun City is no longer alone in the West Valley, and we have not been for some years. We must compete with other younger, newer retirement venues for today's baby boomers. A theater at Mountain View would be a great drawing card to this new generation of retirees. It would also be a prominent asset to the Sun City that is south of Grand Avenue and to the whole of Sun City as a cultural milestone for generations to come.
Hi, I'm Bob Perry. I'd like to thank you all for having the opportunity to supply some input. My concern is that the deep end of the pool be preserved. We've seen over the years that the deep end of Oakmont has been abolished, that the Fairway deep end is significantly reduced, so reduced that it's really a challenge to do any kind of deep-water jogging in that pool. And deep-water exercises is defined as having at least seven feet of water, according to Susan Pressley of Arizona Central. Mountain View deep end provides the best opportunity to do outdoor deep-water exercises. Over the years, the deep end has had a special place for my wife and I. We would see Angie, who had polio, come in her electric wheelchair and using the rails to climb down and to get into the deep end, joined by another person, Russ, who also had polio. Pat, Pat and Harriet Rankin talked about the fact that he had a club foot. For all of these, the deep end provided an excellent opportunity to do exercise. My wife Karen says that it has greatly helped her knees, hips, and back. Thank you. During my health challenges of the last year, as I went from PT to learn how to walk again, the deep end was definitely a help as I moved from a wheelchair to walker to crutches and without any support. But is there any evidence, any research to support these claims? Well, Hayman and Primo proposed water walking exercise program for the elderly, which was published in Public Health Reports in 1992. And why would they propose such a program? Well, again, Susan Pressley, who I mentioned earlier, noted a program, a 12-week program published in Journal of Aging and Physical Ability, that doing deep-water exercises twice weekly for 30 minutes had superior balance improvement over shallow-water exercising. So there may be a unique place for deep-water exercises. Furthermore, Pressley noticed that those with fibromyalgia or arthritis significantly reduced the pain and discomfort when they were not in the water. Finally, the Mayo Clinic website recommends deep-water exercises for this. Now, I won't bore you with other scientific literature, but I do have prepared references for articles attesting to the benefit of deep-water exercises from everything from recovery from stress fractures in the leg to breast cancer survivors improving their fatigue as well as for blood pressure and overall general health in older males. So with that, I'd like to say please preserve the deep end and thank you for listening.
My name is Don McDonald. I'm a 28-year resident of Sun City. I've been visiting here for 43 years. I'm a life member of the Players. And what I'm asking for, I've lived through three tries to get a performing arts center built here over the years. We have no place for the theater, for music, for lectures. What we need is a nice, small auditorium, 400 seats max, a beautiful stage where you could perform and not have to stack the cast in the corner. I've done that. I've designed over 15 sets. We need a performing arts center. And there was a rumor that we would have had one if Dale Webb had not died, because he built one in Sun City West in his first Rec Center. This building doesn't have to be this big. We don't have to forget the other people and the facilities, but there are groups that could use a decent auditorium to perform, have lectures, and dance groups, music. We used to have an organ here. It's gone because we don't have people to play it. We don't have a decent stage back there. There's no room. It doesn't have to be a grand, big building, but it is part of the culture of Sun City.
Hello, my name's George Hampage, and I am the Aqua Fitness Club instructor coordinator. And I just wanted to back up what Suzanne was telling you with some numbers that our club has that we provide to RCSC as well. As of today, we have a membership of 940 members, and that number was updated as our membership chairman walked into the door. We have over 26,600 member attendees use the pools in a year's time. And 21,250 of those member attendees use the Mountain View pool. That's a lot of people attending classes. I mean, that's, that is a huge number. Almost 4,000 of those 21,250 attendees use the Mountain View pool, and that is 19%. It is the only large outdoor pool we have access to. We can put 65 members in a class at this pool. At Oakmont, we can put 35. At Marionette, we can put 45. If we lose this pool for classes, that is a huge, huge blow to our club. We will have roughly 130 people on each four days that we have classes that would have no place to go, because we cannot get pool time at any other location. Those classes will go away. So it's vitally important, not only to the people who live at this end of Sun City, but to the club and to our membership, that they have access to a large outdoor pool. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Regina Heck, and I'm here to advocate for the Sun City Players Community Theater. And what I can tell you from being in a number of plays where I had to change at least five times in two of them, backstage was a nightmare, because there's no room back there when you're having a big musical and a very big cast. And women and men have to change virtually in the same area. There's no privacy. Backstage just is not big enough even to sit down until you go onstage. There's not even enough room for seats for all of us. And the lavatories for the ladies are a nightmare too. I don't know if you've ever been in them. One's got a shower curtain at least. I mean, you know. So I'm hoping, I'm very happy that this committee was reestablished, because I know that we've always been promised that we would have a renovated place or a new place, and we would be so grateful if that could happen very soon.
Hello, my name is Antonette Pallotta, and I'm speaking for my father, Sabatino Pallotta. He's 95. He's been in Sun City since 2001. And I just wanted to point out that Sun City is a beautiful, beautiful place. We're from Ohio, and we come out for the, we're snowbirds, and we recognize the needs of other people here as far as, you know, the swimming pool. And what I would like to say is we would like to have the whirlpool, which you have now here in Mountain View. It's very nice, but when you update it, to also always consider to have it enclosed, an enclosed whirlpool. Because right now, at Fairway, it's a very beautiful whirlpool, but when you come in the winter months, it is very cold, okay? Because you're outside. So to try to remain, to have the whirlpool, an enclosed whirlpool. And also, as the gentleman had talked about and other people here, as far as a whirl, as a therapeutic pool enclosed, also that you have in Sundial. And, you know, Sundial Pool is very beautiful, enclosed. They still continue with classes for, you know... They still continue with classes for, you know, people in the pool, but it's an enclosed pool. It's a little bit more warmer for someone his age. And so I agree that you should have an outdoor pool, but also consider, you know, maybe with the whirlpool, that you also have a therapeutic pool that's indoors, you know, for the snowbirds when we come out and for the people here, as, you know, we're all getting older and we have other arthritis, and you really have to have warm, warm water, enclosed. The other thing is, at Fairway, when they did, when they did the lockers in Fairway, it's very beautiful, but when you're looking for an elderly person and you go into the shower, it might be a good idea to talk to the architects to have next to the shower the dressing room or right across the dressing room. Not in Fairway that you have to take a shower, and then for someone this age, he has to walk quite a ways to the dressing area. So if you would please consider that, I think, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sue. I'm a five-year resident of Sun City, so fairly new. I don't represent any huge clubs. I don't have any statistics. I just know from me, the one thing I would like to see most in Sun City is a theater, somewhere with theater seating, somewhere where we're not sitting cramped together on little metal chairs and looking outward, most of the time at a stage you cannot see. I'm frankly shocked that it doesn't already exist. I do disagree with a Sun City player member who said it should be as small. I think it should be every bit as large as you can make it with as much seating as you can get in it. Sun City is not a small community. I mean, just go on the days when we have our wonderful outdoor entertainment, and it gets rained out, and you end up in sundial on a flat, see, flat giant thing, staring at giant screens, because you can't even tell there's a stage in that room. And it's just, we leave. I mean, who wants to do that? I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm aging. I don't want to sit for hours in a hard little metal chair staring at a big screen. I can do that at home in a nice comfy chair. I want a theater. Appreciate the time.
I have two thoughts. The first one would be, why not have an indoor whirlpool and an outdoor? The space is certainly large enough, maybe even four. The second thought would be, during the construction, to please leave the pool the size it is, but to leave it open during the construction. There's a pool already, there's a bathroom facility towards the back of the pool while this front part is under construction. Don't shut the entire process down for two years or three, but to leave it open as long as possible. Those are my thoughts.
Hi, my name's Dave Worth. I've been a resident of Sun City since 2005. I'm one of those social guys that come to this pool. We love the pool as it is. Yes, there needs to be renovations, but let's be cost-effective and save some money to the people who supply the money. Keep the pool as it is. Yes, I understand there's lap swimmers. We have three swimming lanes on this pool at present time. They can use that to do their laps, as my wife does. I go with a number of people here, and they have all told me they love this pool as it I'm not a social person for the plays, because I've only been to two, but what these previous speakers have said is true. We should be like Stardust and Sun City West. I know that you guys are minded of what we can do with our money, and I think you will supply us with adequate facilities here at Mountain View. I trust in your ability, and I hope you do as we request. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Dearborn. I've been a resident of Sun City since 2012, and speaking in three capacities. One, I'm a board member of Sun City Players Community Theater. If you have not seen a play recently, you need to come see one, because we have really become a very professional theater, and we deserve to have a performing arts center in Sun City, Arizona. The second reason I'm here is I'm a member of the Aqua Fitness Club. I'm taking classes four days a week. We need to keep the pool the size and the shape that it is. I have photographs of 60 people exercising in the pool. It takes every bit of room that the pool has, minus the deep end. We don't, we can't use that, because we have to stand to do our exercises, but the pool is very full. And as the previous speaker indicated, there is nowhere else for us to go. The third reason I'm here is as a grandmother. When my grandchildren come to Sun City, and I have several in the same family, at one time, they were two, four, and six, we couldn't go to the pool, because the younger ones weren't old enough. I would love to see at least one pool in Sun City that had a baby pool where grandparents could take their grandchildren who were under the age of four. It could be fenced off for safety, and in lieu of that, at least put in a splash pad, so the little ones don't have to be left behind. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan McCord. Oops, sorry. I like our pool the way it was when we moved up here. That was 16 years ago. They went in there in 2015, I think. 14 and 15, we're going to resurface it. However, when they resurfaced it, they also cut out on the south side both stairs that go up out of the pool, kind of in the lap area. They put in ladders for us to climb up and down. And I would like to know who decided to put ladders in our pool? And whoever decided to do this, I would love to see them to come down and show us how to use these ladders. Second of all, by not having the stairs down there, the people that have to sit on the south side, the southeast side, and the southwest side of the pool, they have to walk clear around. And for people that have a hard time going up and down stairs, they cannot use the stairs that are on the south or northeast corner and the northwest corner, because they are so very steep and small and short. My husband had a stroke in 2015. He was totally paralyzed. We went through a whole bunch of rehab, and the gals at the rehab finally said it'd be good for him to go into the pool and exercise. So took him up there and couldn't believe all the stairs weren't there yet, just the ladders. And then the stairs on the north side of it were so steep, his foot didn't even fit on it, and he almost fell. So all the people, I think, that have a problem getting in and out of the pool, but in the pool, they do great, need to have those stairs put back in the pool and then leave the pool just where it is, like it is. It is wonderful, and we all love it.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Zerember, and I'd like to show my appreciation to the committee for being available to have this input session for the community. Almost 20 years ago, for whatever reason, I don't recall you being available to do this kind of session. My late wife and I moved in in 1998, and soon after that, Fairway, or yeah, Fairway Pool was demolished. But at the time, like I said, there was no input from the community. And I do appreciate that you are making yourselves available to hear the community's Later on, in, at Oakmont, there was a meeting, and several promises were made, not by your committee, because you weren't even working at the time, and if you were, you weren't available. But several promises were made, one of which included the fact that lap swimmers, and yes, I am a lap swimmer, and we do need our time, because let's not forget, the proper name for these facilities is swimming pool, swimming pool. So we were told that when the volleyball players would come into Oakmont, they would not have any effect on the lap swimmers. Well, surprise! Nobody is allowed in the pool, in the laps, in the lap lanes, or in the spa when the volleyballers are playing. So that was one of the big promises that were made, where we were lied to. Again, I appreciate the fact that you are hearing the issues from the community, and hopefully, your promises will be kept. Last but not least, because the volleyball players are there four days a week, two hours each of those days, they exclude almost everybody else from using the facility. Over the years, I've heard many, many people exclaim how nice Oakmont Pool is with its saltwater system. It's the only pool that has that system. Hopefully, and I don't know how people feel about a saltwater system, but I think it's great. Maybe you can implement that here in Mountain View. I think it would attract a lot more people. More people would feel better when they get out of the pool. The saltwater system is great. It's not like being at the ocean, but believe me, it's great. Thank you again for listening to us.
I'm Steve Oakes. I am president of the Pickleball Club, and I'd like to also thank the long-range planning committee for assembling us here to hear our thoughts. We, this is changing up the subject a little bit, because I think we've heard a lot about performing arts and pool, and it sounds like some very good ideas, most of which I agree with. So speaking for the Pickleball Club, we're very grateful that we have seven courts down here. A lot of people play. You'll see a lot more people playing as the weather starts to get a little bit better. You'll also notice that it gets very busy, so busy that people will wait 30 minutes or more to get onto one of these seven courts. You might say, well, wait a minute, you've got so many courts up at Marionette, and those are busy too. So what we'd like you to do is two things. Consider that this sport with 600 members, more than 600 members on this club, will grow if there's a little bit more free access to the courts. However, you'll see that most of the people here at Mountain View play in the morning. Gets a little hot here in the afternoon, a lot of sun, sun damage to our skin, to us, heat stroke potential, so we don't want to be playing in the afternoon. However, you'll find that Marionette, where there's a cover, there's a lot of people play in afternoon and evening. So we could increase the amount of people, the amount of people playing for longer hours if we had shade covers. Simple shade covers just over those courts would be a big help. So we're asking you for a few more courts, so more people can play without having to wait so long, and shade covers to protect us seniors from the sun damage. I think it'd be safer, we'd have less people that would be having heat problems. Thank you.
My name's Christine Scoville, and my husband and I are new residents of Sun City. The one thing that I would definitely like to see here is a much nicer, larger fitness, where the fitness equipment is. Right now, I find the room very claustrophobic and do not care to use it. Thank you.
I'd like to say something again. The theater that is being proposed would open up more space on this piece of property for further use. What people forget, they've lived here, they come in, they want this, but we also have to think of the people who are coming in. Every time we've proposed a new theater, the ordering clubs wanted 1,000 seats. Nobody can fill 1,000 seats. If they have to have that many seats, put another day on their performance. You know, this is a building that is more wasted than any building in Sun City. It's old, it needs to be replaced. There are other groups, like the Continuing Education Center, that could use it for lectures. It's not just performing arts. It's, and the thing that gets me is, every high school in the Phoenix area has a better theater than we do.
Hi, my name is John Wood. When we moved here, one of the things we moved here for was the fact that you had these great facilities. However, I was very disappointed that we didn't have a theater. We've been involved in community theaters back east, and the fact that you didn't have a theater was very disappointing. So I'd just like to reiterate the fact that Sun City West has a nice theater. Yes, the high schools have a nice theater too, but there's no reason why you have to pass up on this unique opportunity to actually put a theater into the rec center here. Thank you.
My name is Mike Fitzpatrick, and I'm a member of the Players Theater. Our high school in Portland, Oregon, had a stage that was four times bigger than this. This small stage severely limits the type of plays you can put on. I wholeheartedly endorse a new theater of adequate size and space. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Teri Ladura, and I'm one of the new residents that you've been talking about, recently retired. And I know this isn't going to sound very popular based on what I heard earlier, but I do think we need another walking pool. Listen, I just moved here from Southern California, and that walking pool is just as bad as the 405 freeway. You cannot move. It's like a conga line. You know, we need, we need another walking pool, and I don't see why it can't coexist with the social pool that everybody loves so much. Also, I'm not really a person who likes to socialize while I'm exercising, and I think that would be nice if instead of, or a room that was more of a circuit room, a circuit training room. It would be similar to like Curves, where you had a machine, and then a pad to run on, and then another machine, instead of trying to loop through in one of the gyms. Believe it or not, I lost 30 pounds doing that 30-minute workout, so that would be my suggestion.
My name's Gary Rearing. My wife Edie and I have been coming to Sun City for a long time. Her aunt and uncle purchased property. Her aunt and uncle purchased property in the 1970s. Her dad in the 80s, Edie and I in 2007. And three years ago, we gave up our snowbird status and became permanent residents. One of the things we always enjoyed going, you know, over 40-some years ago, was the opportunity to enjoy the great old open pool at Fairway. And in more recent years, this wonderful, beautiful pool right here. The one thing we, my wife and I, along with many of the people that we socialized with at Mountain View Pool, is that you're going to do a copy of what's now in place at Fairway. A lot of us use this pool for exercise. And we enjoy the added benefit of enjoying the gorgeous Arizona sunshine. I, for one, walk in this pool on the advice of my cardiologist and my orthopedic surgeon. I love the resort type pool. I can socialize with people. For instance, Tony, who spoke earlier. Our friends Jim and Gail here. And while I'm exercising, I can walk my mile in about an hour's time and get all those great rays. We don't want another copy of the Fairway with the walking lanes. Hey, we live in Arizona where the sun shines daily, except for today. But... And if for those of us who enjoy an open pool, wanted a covered pool, we would have stayed in Minnesota, Oregon, Wisconsin, New York, wherever. Let's also not forget that Mountain View is one of the three pools in the area that, in Sun City, that allow children, okay? And the other being Lakeview and Marionette. Tony mentioned, the first speaker, that in the next few months during the winter, this pool is going to be crowded. And I've heard some of you say that your grandkids will be here. No kids are allowed at Bell or at Sundial. No one under 16 is allowed at Fairway or Oakmont. If Mountain View would be converted to a walking pool, I'm pretty positive those same rules would go into effect and no one under 16 would be allowed here. If that happens, that leaves two pools that accept children. And that's going to put a lot of pressure on Lakeview and Marionette. To me, the solution is pretty simple. The south side of Sunshine already has one pool with walking, with the walking pool that's covered. And that's at Fairway. For those who want that type of pool, Fairway's only about a mile from here. But please allow those of us who like an open pool with sunshine to have an option also. Thank you.
Norm Filking. To the president of the Long Range Planning Committee and the board members and to the Sun Cityans who are here. Mike, is it appropriate to ask the committee a couple of questions?
We're not here to answer questions. We are here to take suggestions. We're not going to turn this into a back and forth.
All right, I'll try to make what I'm going to say suggestions. Until I got here today, I didn't hear anything about doing anything with the pool. Maybe some people who use the pool a lot heard it. Rumors start, things happen. But anyhow, I think it would be appropriate, this is a suggestion, for the Long Range Planning Committee to set a priority and let the priorities be known as to what you would like to do or what you think the community wants to do first. New building? Rehabbing this building? Changing the pool? Changing the exercise facilities? Everything. What is the priority? Number one, two, three, four? What kind of budget is there? If you could rehab this building by pushing out the back a little bit in the front and save a couple million, let's do it. If you can't, fine. But there are plenty of theaters in the valley where the architects have already been paid to design them. Most of them are in high schools. They've got great theaters. City of Peoria has a theater. I've never been in it, been in it. But you do need a slanted floor if you're going to have a proper theater for plays or concerts, or not concerts, lectures or whatever. And I think it would be appropriate that sometime soon, the committee sets up a priority and lets us know what the priority is so we know where to put our efforts.
My name is Mary Harrison, and I am a member of Players. I'm a past member of their board. But first, I would like to speak for the swimmers. I'm one of these arthritic people. Fairway is my pool. I love the walking pool. We don't need another Fairway. We need to keep the open resort pool the way most people want it to be. One of the most interesting things about Sun City and one of its biggest assets is that all these rec centers have a personality that is a little different from any other. Carbon copies are not a good idea. Now, on behalf of my theater, at one point for my sins, I think, I was a county commissioner in the state of Minnesota. And I had to go to a lot of breakout sessions to learn about this and that. And one of them had to do with juvenile detention of all things. And it was led by a couple of psychiatrists who pointed out that performing arts of all kind are the best thing to keep the mind active and to develop the mind. Being a theater person, I've been directing and acting for something like 35 years and set designing and everything else they need me to do, including dressing and room where there's no room to do it back there. But my little ears picked up right away because I had been working with a good many high school kids. And I could see the difference in their level of maturity, not that they didn't flashback into being teenagers, than with the kids who didn't take drama. Now I'm working with elderly people. And they really want to keep, we, I'm including myself here, really want to keep our minds going. And it doesn't matter if you come to see performing arts, if you take part in them, if you go to a workshop, if you go to a lesson or if you just go socialize. We need that in Sun City for our minds as well as our general well-being. Thank you.
My name is Yula Miller. I have been here in Sun City since 1980. I have, as I can tell you, I'm a member of the, of the rec, of the theater group. I am impressed by hearing the views from the other aspects here. I am disappointed in one, a couple of things. The first thing, I'm ashamed that the back curtain is closed back here behind your committee. How many people here have ever been backstage to see what we really have back there? I hear so much from people who have never seen what is, is back there. When you have a cast for a musical of 10 or 15 people, oh my, you all should have had a chance to walk backstage and see what is there now. I hope we can do as well as the poorest teenage church and auditorium and high school in the whole valley. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gloria Beck. I'm not here for the swimmers or the performing arts, though I am an avid pickleball player, but that's not why I'm here. I just want to say that we moved from Maine, where most people go, to Florida. But we moved here in 2000 because there's nothing to do in Maine for theater opportunities, and we're avid theater lovers. So I usher at Arizona Broadway. Where season tickets, people are gamaged. And we go to all the theaters around. And my, Sun City has always been about marketing itself. And we have a lot of friends that we have moved out here from Maine versus going to Florida. But I always tell people, the only thing Sun City does not have is a performing arts center. And that's a big lack. And we need pickleball shades.
Hello, my name's Diana Lamb. And I'm a newbie here in Sun City. I've only moved in in January. But I have to tell you, I was shocked when I found out there wasn't a theater because the other facilities that are available in Sun City are so tremendous. I've been a valley resident since 1973. And I'm very familiar with the theater. Most of that time since I've been here, I've been an actor. So when I came to Sun City looking forward to getting involved again, I have done that, joined Players, joined Readers Theater. And now I find out there isn't actually a theater. So I would hope you would consider putting some resources into something that not only allows those people who are participating, but also gives a benefit to those who want to be entertained.
Hello, my name is Howard Zlatnik. I've been a member of Sun City for about 14 years and 50 years in Phoenix. Now, the easiest way to save money and to build what we want is to look around and see what we have. We have a beautiful pool that needs some work on it. If we are the place to have a theater, maybe we should have some of the other facilities work together with us and work on putting those facilities here as a, as a theater. And we do not need to add a walking pool or whatever it is. We have the facilities. Let's use what we have and improve it. 50 years, we haven't improved our facilities. And we have a lot of people. So if we are going to have, let's say, a major theater, why can't the other places in Sun City work with us? We have the area. Let's go and make it then. But we can't do it by ourselves. So what I'm saying is, let's work with what we have. That's why we're here today. And don't take away our pool.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Russ Toman. I'm new here. But just an observation for me is, I've heard enough. We obviously need a theater. But to help people who would like the pool here, because I am a lap swimmer, I think you want to have the pool open from a capacity standpoint as it is now. And you need to build a separate lap pool nearby. This way, you don't shut down the pool facilities at the time being while you reestablish a new lanes for lap swimmers. And for dealing with the ladder problem that we have for our people getting in and out of the water, I actually recommend that maybe we go to a zero depth going into this recreation pool. Then you don't have to worry about fancy ladders and all this other nonsense that you talked about that can harm people. So we have the pool capacity. You have the land capacity here from the other rec centers that I can see. And I have to make one comment. I had no idea that I could actually go swim at Oakmont because I thought I had to be on the volleyball team to use that facility. So I had no idea that any of us could really go there. I was told that's the pool for sports and everything. So I never even thought about it. I actually visited there to check out. And I saw, okay, the volleyball team's here, okay, big deal. But that didn't impress me. So I'm just taking from a capacity standpoint. You've got to keep the pool open for the people that need it here. But you need obviously different capacity for lanes for swimming. Seems to me, and don't forget, people want a theater.
Hi, my name's Bill. When I read the board, this was advertised as a town hall meeting. It's not a town hall meeting. I ran town hall meetings back in Philadelphia. And it's a little bit of give, it's a little bit of take. These guys don't want to give us any information of what you're planning. We're hearing rumors bouncing off every wall. And it's just not fair. And that's why half the room is left.
Hi, I'm Linda Olson. And the one thing that hasn't been addressed that we just love at this facility is the mini golf. And I really hope that you will keep it. Our grandchildren love it. I know they lost it at Fairway. So I really kind of hope that you, the mini golf will stay. We just got a new carpet on it about a year ago. And it's, it doesn't look like it gets used a lot because there's no monitor over there. But there's always people playing at it.
Hi, my name is Francine Feeny. And I'm an ordinary citizen of Sun City. I like the proposals that the swimming pool should be open. And there are two ropes for lap swimming. I like the idea about a new theater. I think that is important for us and for Peoria and surrounding areas. Now, when are you going to propose your suggestions? And when will the project begin? I would like to know, and so would everybody else. Thank you.
I guess it's my turn. My name is Greg Ingstrom. I am a member of the Sun City Players Club also. But I, one of the things that I think perhaps is being overlooked is that the ladies and gentlemen on the stage are an advisory group to the RCSC board. They make recommendations. Before you can have any details about how the pool's going to look or the theater may look, they can make recommendations, they listen to us. But the Board of Directors, if they decide they don't want to spend money here, none of this will happen. So the most important thing is to see, as has been changed two or three different times, that we indeed have a budget and that the decision is made to do something with Mountain View. So not only do we need to let our thoughts be known to these fine people up on the stage, but we have to make sure that you're at the board meetings and that the Board of Directors understand how important this is to us also. Thank you.
Do I have any other hands raised? Otherwise, I've got a few people who want to repeat. Anybody else haven't spoken yet who wants to?
I've been to all the pools. My name is Jackie Schroeder. I've been to all the pools, and this one is the most sociable one. I see people bring coolers in and whatnot. Would it be too much to have a snack bar? People like to be here for hours and hours. I think a snack bar would be wonderful.
Okay, I repeat myself. Anybody, first timers? Okay, I'm going to go to a repeat. Thanks, Dave.
Just real quick, when we first got here to Sun City, not that long ago, about three years ago, I was really shocked not to see some kind of performance venue. I assumed there was one, how that went over my head, I don't know, but I came to see a musical performance in this facility, and then I realized, oh, I need to adjust my thinking. And I didn't realize there was such a large community of people who also wanted to take part or to attend a nicer facility for theater and music and swamp music and other educational things that would be appropriate in a performing arts facility. What do I do with this?
I just wanted to say that when my parents passed away, my mother in 2003, my brother and I came, and I thought, oh my gosh, the place looks kind of like a dump. Maybe we should go over and see Grand, Sun City Grand. It was just new, about seven years at that time. So we toured it and went through all the models, and then I noticed it took 45 minutes to drive, and this was in 2003, from Sun City Grand back here. Subsequently, I thought, one day I went along and I saw the brand-new Fairway, because I was in and out of here. I thought, oh my God, this is going to save the place. And subsequently, because that Fairway is as good as the fancy gyms in Irvine, and it is wonderful. The whole facility was well thought out. And I think, as a consequence, all the people moving in, they've been updating their houses like mad. You know, it's really, this is not dead in this area anymore. So I think with the renovation, or complete overhaul or replacement of this facility will definitely add to all of our home values, as well as to our quality of life. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Owen, and I too am a second-generation Sun Cityan, relatively new, recently retired, lived in a condo, loved Fairway, but Mountain View is the place that my childhood memories are located in. Love the open sky, love the palm trees. However, as an adult, I have come to realize that my skin does not always need as much sunlight, as it's so easy to get here. And so the thought of perhaps adding some sun shades, leave it open for the most part, but provide some protection for our skin. Additionally, as an adult and now somebody concerned about future generations, in listening to some of the recent reports of heat sink capabilities, the amount of concrete that we have in our metro Phoenix area, wondering if the committee would please consider the importance of the landscape here, for whatever it is that is chosen, whether it's the magnificent swallows, whether it's appropriate native shade trees out here on the upper deck at least, so that the residents pay less for the cooling. We hope that you would consider solar properties as well, to keep the cost down for our future generations. In addition, I've been here watching my parents, and watching all of us, various stages of rehab, recoup, or aging. And as I watch us come to the pool, I see that there is one shower, and it's on the far side. And if you are feeling weary at all, and you know who you are, you slip into that pool without a shower. We've all seen it happen. Nobody would admit to doing it, but we need another shower, we need showers at each entrance to the pool area. I also understand the desire for our snowbirds to be warm in the winter and have indoor facilities. And I really was not keen on the indoor hot tub. That was just sort of, ugh, for me. But it meets a need. But I would like to see an outdoor hot tub here, because this is a social area. There is no reason we cannot have both here. Dear God, our exercise room is abysmal. You know it. We presently have the cast-off equipment from everybody else. For those of you with therapy experience or backgrounds, you know the importance of I've been cut off, I'm going too slow. We need more, and specifically, our new step machines, recommended so much by rehabilitators. There are multiple at all of the other ones. Ours, I know, is just the, we have one, and we wait 35 to 40 minutes to utilize that piece of equipment. I also echo the desire for a zero, oh, Lord, my notes, zero-depth entry pool. It would be a minor change to our present pool, but for anyone with disability in terms of steps or ladders, it's the way to go. Perhaps in our new shaded area up at the top, we could have the kids' playpad area. And by the way, that's not just fun for kids. Those are pretty cool. Those water sculpture fountains that you can actually inhabit is a fun and lovely addition to our area. Finally, snack bar? There isn't a restaurant attached to any of our rec centers here in the south of Grand. I think that could be a consideration. God bless our performing arts people, our educators. Please, help keep our minds as active as our bodies with a performing arts center. Thank you.
My name is Jim Balk, and I'm with the Sun City Community Players, one of our board members. And I just wanted to, I guess, further illustrate some of the needs, or at least perceived needs, of the performing arts area. We've outlined pretty much all of the numerical kinds of things that everyone would like to see as far as permanent seating, slopes floor, and all that kind of situation. I'd like to just add one further thing, and that is to encourage some of the other clubs or organizations that might make use of a permanent facility, performing arts facility. We have a number of musical groups throughout Sun City that would dearly love to have a quality venue with decent acoustics. Could that ever happen? It certainly hasn't here. We're making do with our Jima... Jimatorium, such as it is, and making do with what we have, and we appreciate that opportunity as far as the potential upgrade, and look forward to the planning committee's recommendations.
My name is Thorin Peterson, and when I first arrived here, I got collared into directing a couple of shows for the theater. What they've said before is so true as far as space is concerned, but you know, we've talked about having musical groups in here also, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but the Concert Band has done some concerts here, and Concert Band is quite large. So in your planning, if you are planning to put up a new facility with a decent stage, please keep in mind, we have groups of 100 people who will perform and have performed in here scrunched together back there, so they could hardly get, like, for instance, I play percussion, and I know the percussion is, we're trying to inch past one another to get to the different instruments when they had to play. And they even had to put on a piece of stage out front for the director to stand on. So in your planning, keep that in mind, to plan for a large performing group, not just for a musical that has 20 or 30 people in it, but for a pit orchestra, if possible. That would be nice. And then a large performing area for the large performing groups. And of course, what he said, we need decent sound, decent lighting, so that we can put on quality performances for all these people in the Valley. Thank you.
Okay, I have other ideas other than pickleball for you. Listening to this performing arts discussion, and it seems like it's just beyond concept that you would not provide a 400, 500 seating facility now based on all the inputs you've received. So how are you going to deal, once you have that designed and built, how are you going to deal with the parking? Because I know up in Marionette, when we have a tournament for pickleball, we have a parking issue. So I've thought, you know, this might be already in your plan, it may be already something that you're considering that, you know, you're not ready to talk about, but we don't want to waste space, okay? What about going up or down in terms of parking? I've seen none of that in any of the facilities, in RCSC facilities, where we just have to keep expanding asphalt, adding heat, and not good for the environment, as the lady pointed out over here. Let's look at the aesthetic values. We don't need more asphalt. So could we look at going up or down for parking? Because when we get those 400, 500 people auditorium, people coming in, you know, you're going to look for parking. Don't use up good space. Don't take away, as one lady was saying, the mini golf area to put in parking, okay? So suggestion? Three layers, two layers, up or down, whatever. If you have a zoning issue with height, go down, okay? Whatever it is, put in enough parking.
One of the considerations that the community players was concerned with is the size of this theater. There have been proposals in the past for 1,000 seats and so forth. That's unrealistic. But as far as parking goes, as you exit the auditorium today, there's a sign in the back, this theater was designed for occupancy of 800. If we were to build a theater of about 400 would be appropriate, it would mean that we would need less parking than what is available today. Parking should not be an issue.
Hi, my name is Priscilla Fenner, and I'm a second-generation Sun City, and I've been a member of the community theater for 28 years. So up to this point, they have not mentioned in any of these previous speakers how much fun it is to be in a production here and put on your track shoes and come from the backstage area over here to where the makeup is done, in the kitchen. Now, I bet you a lot of you didn't know that. When you come in to go to a play sometime, take a peek through the windows over there, and you'll see them being put into makeup in the kitchen. And then they go half-dressed with their smocks on them, between the kitchen, down by the side of the pool, and into the back door of the theater. Because the architects of this building, all those years ago, only gave us four to six stations, three on each side, one for men and one for women, for makeup. And that doesn't work, because the makeup technicians pass people around, and they need more space, and they do it in the kitchen. So it would, while it would be, it'll take less energy for the people to get into makeup, and they'll be able to turn that energy into the performances that you have come, you've learned to expect from the Sun City players.
I agree with her, because for many years, I did the makeup in the kitchen. And could people be leaving for the same reason that I might be leaving, because these seats are so uncomfortable?
In reply to a stage, yes, we need a stage that other groups can use. As a designer of over 15 shows, one of the greatest challenges I ever had from a director was in Brigadoon, cast of about 30, make the church in the village disappear. Try it back there. I did it, and I made it work. But we need a stage that can be used by everybody and used to its fullest.
At the conclusion of this presentation, I would encourage the committee members to tour backstage. And be careful, I don't want you to get hurt.
Okay, last call.
I just have one comment about parking. Currently, our musicals, we set up for 400, sometimes increase to almost 5. 10, 15 years ago, they used to set up for almost 600. So parking is not an issue from that size perspective. Thank you.
My name is Marie Crossley, and I've just been listening to this wonderful plea. I'm a player, and I would love the theater for the players. However, I was just talking to someone who comes here to the movies, and she said, I won't come anymore, because it's so uncomfortable. And you do put on movies here, so you might consider it just for the movie goers as well. Thank you.
Come on, we still got 35 minutes. Anybody else? Okay, looks like we're done. Oh, one more.
Just a note for the people who are talking about the difficulty with this pool. The poor, wonderful Handicapped Bubbles Club has been working for 30 or more years to get people to use the pool at Sundial, which is especially set up with a wheeled entrance into the smaller pool, and people who are willing to work with people who need help. And this is just a side remark for the people here who are talking about your handicapped access to this pool. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you to all who attended and all who gave their suggestions. The committee hopes to have a preliminary report ready by the end of the year for presentation to the Board of Directors. And if there's anything else, come on back at 6 o'clock, we're going to do this all over again.
This is a copywritten production of the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated and is intended for the sole purpose of informing our Recreation Center members. Any duplication, copying, transmission, broadcast, or use including electronic and social media is strictly prohibited without the prior written consent from the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated. Thank you for watching.